So as Bonnie had commented before, just to make sure you understand, these are, we're going to look at the major submitted expenditures. So these are not proposed, they're not vetted, they're submitted. So these are from, straight from the department. Again, their instructions were to reduce their department budgets to achieve an overall 2% reduction, and those reductions were based on the size of the department. I'm happy to say that all departments did meet their reduction targets. Everybody played, played nicely.
So when you say all departments, is that including things that really aren't a city department, but they're part of the city budget?
Like the schools?
The schools?
We do not have the budget from school board yet. There's a placeholder in here that we'll talk about.
What's the 2% reduction?
We did ask them for their reduction, but again, we don't have anything approved from the school board yet. They approved their capital plan, but not their operating plan. So we do not have that number yet.
That's the biggest number. Now, as I was looking at this, as we're looking today, there's lots of little things coming around the edges and whatnot, but the biggest number is the one on there. And that's, if you ever get a handle on that, I think it would be a much higher cut.
So, and then, and this is general fund. This is general fund. And again, what we're going to look is our highlights. It's not everything. There's no way I could have compiled the list of everything. We'd be here for days. So just, we're going to look at some of the bigger highlights here.
Before you go forward, because I think you can come up at different points. Of those submissions where there were cuts, were those cuts in positions but not filled positions, or are they cuts in positions that are currently have an employee occupying?
What was submitted is both. There are some vacant positions, like finance. I had a vacant position that was one of my cuts. But there were positions that were cut that are filled.
I would say the majority are positions where people are done.
Yes.
With a little bit of vacancy management building these cuts.
Some, yes, some, yeah.
I know last year, I think we asked them to do a 2% reduction as well last year, so...
We did, and the difference between this year and last year is that we, in hindsight, it's always 2020, we allowed department heads to come and plead their case and ask me for a waiver, and so give out waivers. This year there was, there was no mercy.
This year you waived their waiver.
Yes, we did, we did.
Donna, is it possible, as you go through this, to point out in the departments which ones are vacant positions that they're eliminating versus occupied?
I think for the most part I can.
Generally, we can.
I don't, yeah, I think generally I can.
So, and I, the way I'm going to look at these is through our major categories. So, general government, city manager's office, they eliminated their federal relations liaison services. The city attorney, as Bonnie had mentioned before, eliminated the new assistant city attorney position that was created in 2018 with the intention of succession planning and to assist with the social services caseload. You know, there's not a lot, there's not a lot in there to be able to cut, and that's what happens. You know, we're predominantly people, so when you're asking for a cut, you know, there's always gonna, it's gonna have to fall to people in most cases. Commissioner revenue, they did eliminate the new financial professional three position that was created in this year, and that was to assess with revenue assessments and also the audits of businesses. So, and they, that's what they could find a cut.
Because neither of those positions are filled.
Yeah, neither one of these positions are filled. In financial services, I chose to eliminate a financial tech three position, which is my assistant and also assisted with budget development. So that just means that, you know, we're all working more overtime, but that's what it is. That position is currently vacant and we're figuring it out. And then I also was able to cut and trim from some of our expenses, like baking services charges, we're trying to minimize those. So we're looking at some of our other expenditures to just really tailwind them down. Human resources, they reduced citywide training and development budget, which impacts Edge and all other of our city staff training opportunities.
Edge is our, is the name acronym for our internal training program for all city employees.
I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure I can tell you what it stands for. But NIT, and information technology, they eliminated a network analyst position that is currently filled, which will create longer support response times. And then they also reduced their training budget, which impacts their ability to support application software upgrades. Judicial administration, really the one big one was the sheriff's office, and they reduced their temporary budget, which impacts deputy support in the court facilities. And the state also has told them they have too many positions, state-supported positions, so as deputies retire, those positions are being eliminated, and so they lost one state position. But it was not filled, because it was a retirement. Public safety, eliminated the community action team, or the cat team, which is seven officers and two civilian positions. Those are filled. They eliminated the crisis intervention team coordinator, which is an hourly position, it's part-time, .7 FTE, that is filled. And they eliminated the majority of the animal control unit. So they eliminated 3.73 positions. All of those are filled.
So they're trying to eliminate the whole, the whole cat team, or do they...
Yes, that was the entire cat team.
Oh.
These are submitted. Yeah, remember submitted, submitted.
So they made us choose the drastic versus...
Always, every hall is.
Every department will be, you're right.
Well, the other unit they talked about eliminating would have been the traffic unit. Traffic safety unit.
So what does the traffic, well, in the beginning, the traffic safety, is that just like parking, like speeding tickets and stuff?
No, I think it investigates wrecks and trucks, the 18-wheelers have to comply with all kinds of state stuff, and so it's a lot of that.
And accidents too, that would be great for you.
Traffic scenes.
Could cause accidents?
Wow, still with the porno.
I think we should eliminate them, right?
So less accidents, more money.
Well, and what they proposed when they eliminated the community action team was the officers, if they were more senior officers, they would be put back into the street cops and some of the younger officers would be probably the ones that would be eliminated, but they were filled positions. Fire was to eliminate eight firefighters, which puts an engine or ladder truck company out of service every day, which would probably lead to closing a fire station. And of course, those are all filled. Emergency services, they eliminated the emergency medical dispatch program and one communications specialist position and the training and everything that goes with the emergency medical dispatch program, and that position is also filled.
That's the thing we just added.
Yes, it is.
Where somebody calls and you can say, hey, you know, they're blue, while the EMS guys are getting there, do this, here's how you do CPR. Okay. And then just added that a few years ago.
That's right.
That's interesting.
Public works in building maintenance, they eliminated one building services coordinator, which impacts support predominantly for city halls. So they would have to share the other coordinators, so we would be on the list, as opposed to have immediate support. And that is a filled position. And refuse, they eliminated all recycling drop-off sites, and we have seven of those. In health and welfare, general services eliminated a youth planner position, and that impacts the future for prevention programs and services. But this is a vacant position, and it's been vacant for several years, they've kind of held on to it. They don't think there's an immediate impact, but it would impact future prevention programs.
Others have helped fill the gap there, like Dana.
This is Dana's position.
Former.
Former position, and she's doing this, and her, plus...
That was to help allow her to do her current job.
Yes, and Jan, she also helps, look here, she's from the...
Parks and Recreation eliminated all city-sponsored special events funding, including support for city services such as street closures, venue setup, and public safety. They eliminated the internet service for three community centers, which impacts students' online homework needs and ability to offer computer classes in public use, and...
I mean, obviously, this, you know, that's saving $40 a month, you know, on a thing. Is there, can we get to something that's kind of like real thoughts, as opposed to, you know, everything being the most extreme kind of thing? Because there's obviously, everything isn't a matter of extreme, and I understand we're kind of looking at their thoughts to get to the 2%, but there, you know, there are things that are always the getting rid of the crossing guard. Oh, so we're not going to get rid of the crossing guard, so we keep the whole money in there. And so if it's kind of that, it's kind of like an all or nothing, like eliminating all city-sponsored special events. Okay. If you can get rid of seven of them that are unnecessary or duplications, okay, as opposed to, so they're kind of more of the absurd, because it's never going to happen to the extent, because nobody up here is going to say, hey, get rid of the whole cat team.
Yeah.
But if there's a way to kind of figure out something that's kind of real and doable, if that makes any sense.
The city-sponsored special events, you still would have city events as the funding piece that goes along with that.
Right, it's $77,000 in Parks and Rec in the current budget.
I was just going to say that I believe the department directors made very difficult choices in putting this forward. We've not expanded, everyone's working at as close to capacity to do the work to deliver services to citizens, and these were not easy choices for them to make. And I can tell you they're even more difficult choices clearly for me to make, to balance with, you know, a less than $200,000 increase in revenues. So I hear what you're saying, but the choices, let's go back to police for a second. You know, the police choice would be to eliminate the traffic safety unit or eliminate officers on the street, because there's not much more there. That's what, that's what they do, so...
And so with that, what we would then do is put things into a, you know, as a budget paradigm that says one is essential, what are things that are 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and what are things that are not?
Absolutely.
Which are things that are nine months out of the year, eight hours a day? You know, when we look at all these particular things, when there's been more responsibility, and then I look, again, just big picture, and I know you look at the money that's gone to schools, when you look at the fact that we're supposed to give $18 million with assessments or extra benefits, we give $20 million. We're matching $42 million, and declining number of work, because there's less kids. Sure, those kids may be more difficult and whatnot, but you have declining numbers, you have declining scores, and more and more money goes there. And so if you look at big picture, that says this is something that's 24 hours a day, 365 days a week, versus something that is nine months out of the year, eight hours a day, declining, that is where a big thing could be done to then say, we're going to keep our public safety. They'll go some things that I think should be big picture decisions.
And maybe we should have said that, had that conversation before you just say, everyone we do should budget by 2%. Maybe we should have said, there are some things that are on that 2% cut.
Well, I think that's the purpose of today, to get that message.
So that's to manage.
But to balance.
Yeah, but to see this and know they had to spend time on that, you know, maybe a thought for the future, is there are some essential things, you know, that are 24/7. There are some essential things that a 2% cut across the board doesn't even make sense here.
Well, one of the things I think Jeff was getting at, rightly so, is we're not in position to really analyze what the impact of any of this stuff is. We don't know. What difference does it make if we cut an engine truck? Now, if we knew, if we saw that the number of engine calls was decreasing over time, then maybe it makes sense to cut an engine truck, and if our ambulance calls are increasing, then maybe you put an ambulance team in instead of, instead of a fire team, or an engine. But to understand, I don't feel like we've got the data to be able to realize whether that's a good decision or not. We're going to have to rely on the manager to do that, and then when she comes back with the budget, she'll, she'll have to, it'd be very helpful to have some of that data so that we can make a...
But since that's starting point.
Oh, of course, of course it is. So our role is to give you some feedback on our initial thoughts, and a lot of pieces of feedback is, if we are going to make, whatever suggestions we report, I'd like to see the data that supports it.
So to me, then, let me have full understanding here, you've not completed the budget for next year, but you're going to present us in March.
Absolutely.
No, no.
Well, we have started, absolutely.
We're reviewing.
That's how we got to here. So departments have submitted their budgets, we are analyzing their budgets, and, you know, we're starting to think about how we might balance with our revenues. And we need more information from you to make sure that the principles that we're operating under are in alignment with your principles.
And that's why I was kind of bringing up the big picture items, and what, you know, and I realize it's a tough thing to talk about, because we talk about it, you know, kind of globally, like we care about the kids and our future, and, you know, these kind of words, which obviously we all care about. But hiring more people for less students on one side, while we're getting rid of a cat team on another side, to me, doesn't make global sense. And so like what Turner was just saying about, if you have less fire calls, maybe you get rid of less of that fire engine. If you have less students, you wouldn't be hiring 70 more people. You know, I mean, that's got to be a really tough sale. If our city was getting smaller in population and our workforce was growing, our city's growing in population, that means there's more things to do in community planning, more things for the police, more fire. But if you have shrinking numbers on one side, I don't think that can be just to say, hey, we're going to globally accept whatever is presented, and here's the big number, because that's some big numbers that are out there. And that's, that's where I'd like to see us maybe tighten our belt a little bit, without hurting the, you know, education by any means, but it's a lot of extra money that is going there over and above what's required, so.
You've consistently, Jeff, all due respect, you know, I think a lot of people...
But that's, that's the choice.
You've reminded us of that, year after year, and again, you're reminding us, and so we've noted, and listened, and if we are a growing city, I'm looking ahead to the future, I'm looking ahead to the needs everywhere. We have an easy job, and our staff doesn't have an easy job, of doing the present, but also looking with eyes to the future too, of if you cut this, what's going to happen? You know, because on the streets, if you do impact kids in some way educationally, you know, the risk factors may go up, they may end up being dropped out, who knows? And you have more crime, maybe their poverty rate will go. It's a huge picture, you're absolutely right, and it's not an easy job. And I appreciate, I think Turner, you made an excellent point. This is hard decision simply because the data, the things that you brought out, the points, we need to know almost to have a fluid picture of what needs to be essential and what doesn't need to be, or what we need to keep and what we need to maybe not keep. So that's difficult.
Bonnie, I have a question, and I think it's been alluded to over the last couple of minutes. You certainly gave credibility to all your department heads, and you asked them for that 2% cut, and this is the product of that, this is their submission. And in submitting this, it's pretty clear that there are some elements in there that strike surprise and dislike among the council. And it was suggested that maybe some of those submissions included things that would be stark offensive issues that we would never want to cut, particularly in safety. How much, and of course, you give credibility to your department heads, how much are you in position, after this first phase, to go back and say, okay, give me some nuances, give me some, some elements that are not quite so significant to serving the public, but could have been cut and put in here in lieu of the major cuts that were included? And I don't know whether you want to do that, giving deference to your department heads, or even are in a position to do it.
So I asked them to be realistic in what they submitted, just provided that the consequences of what they were proposing, and to not give necessarily the things that council would react to and say, oh, we're never going to cut that, so sort of back to the drawing board, city manager. So, yeah, I can add, I can ask them for sure, and they will, they will give me something different. I don't know that the consequences of what they give me are going to be very different.
Because we're in the business of delivering services.
All right, and I know in a few minutes, we're going to have to assess the next step of this, as to how we approach measuring what we eliminate or not.
Okay, but Turner, you didn't strike.
And like, because I, I mean, I can pull out specific examples, like in recent council conversation, we had the conversation of how many public information officers do we need? So if police have a part time, if public works has a part time, if we have a whole department that's responsible for that, can those funds, you know, be halved, because they're not paying for someone, and put into the communications department, you know? So there are specifics, I can go into schools, and I can say that, you know, with an achievement gap, some positions that were there to affect an achievement gap, we're not getting the biggest bang for our buck in those positions. So we can, we, as a council, can weed through budgets and say, you know, this may not be effective. I mean, that's what I would probably want the departments to do, in a sense, and getting to Randy's point, to Turner's point of the data, because that's why I said, oh, drastic things on the screen for us to look at. Cat team has been very effective in the building of relationships and neighborhoods and connectivity between departments. I can point out a whole lot of reasons why I wouldn't want to get rid of the cat team. So, you know, but is that two officers that we don't, you know, I don't know, is the officer that sits up? And this is what I'm saying. We are living in an era where there is technology that's replacing jobs. You know, I'll give an example, Amazon Go, right? Amazon Go opened in Seattle, no clerks, no waiting in lines, no bagging, you put your phone there, you pull off the shelf, and you pay, you walk out the store. I think even our departments, we have to start thinking like that. I don't want to eliminate positions necessarily because we're in the people business, you know? But I think there have to be ways that we can deliver services more efficiently, realign some staff, realign the purpose of what positions used to do, and, you know? And then people will say, well, not all of our city is technology friendly. Okay, then, again, we're back into, I think that's where our poverty initiative and the progression of how we get people to look at the reality of life as we're living it now, and what our future in the next years are going to be like. Because if we're thinking, as we talk about people getting jobs, and we talk about, you know, some of the things that we are used to having people in jobs for are not there. And so, you know, machinery is taking the position, technology is replacing. And so I think that's the reality, that people want the services that we have to have. We have to make some tougher decisions also with the data, but on, using the data, on what are actually things that we still need people for and we don't? And I know we used to look at outsourcing private things to companies and that sort of thing, but I'm just looking at those hard decisions of, you know, workers' comp, and what's, what's that in relation to, are there other ways to provide services in more efficient manners? So, I mean, we can get into the weeds, and I would suggest that with the departments, that, well, council can start pulling back the layers and saying, yeah, we might not need eight more firefighters, and what's that, and maybe we'll go up one more minute on response time because of that. You know, maybe that's something that's okay, we need to let the citizens know that it's going to affect in some way or the other. But I'd like to see more of that at, in our deliberating process too.
Well, I think you have to remember too, I can use financial services as an example, this isn't the first year we've had to reduce our budgets. So, you know, public safety has kind of been set aside to say, okay, you guys are important, and they should be. But, you know, when you look at the service departments, since I've been director, I've lost 13 positions. And we've been able to find different ways to deliver service, different ways to do the work. Everybody's doing more with less. So I don't think this is the first time we're having to do this. So now we're really at a point that because we've had to reduce our budgets over the year, you know, there's not much left, you know? So it's, it's just really difficult as a director to throw something on there, to make your reductions, because, you know, we just, we're still coming out of the recession, you know, and...
So the 2%, is that the 2% on the 140? The general fund budget numbers that you had up there, 158 million, or what do you have on there? Is that the 2% number you're looking for?
What we did, we went to, we looked at fiscal year 2018 adopted budget, and looked at what 2% was.
Of the general fund?
On the general fund. Each department. And, well, no, we came up with one big number.
So is that 2% of the 140 million?
No, and then, well, yes. But how we allocated that to departments and what they had to cut...
Based on there.
Is we took out dedicated revenues for those departments, because like social services, so much of what they spend, so we're looking at city costs in departments. And then based on that number, and the percentage of that is of your total general fund...
So the total 2%...
That's how we cut. For most departments, it was more than 3% cut.
Okay, so once the total...
To achieve a total 2% reduction.
So the 2% number of that came out to 3 million, came out to 2 million, came out to 1.5 million?
2.8 maybe, 2.7?
But for most departments, it was greater than a 2% cut. It's really, it was really more like 3, and a little more than that for some.
That's true.
Okay, just again, reintermating Vice Mayor's, between these points, also Councilman Peril's point, getting, I'm not trying to tell the department heads what to do, again, we've had more information, like, for example, in the police department, to me, the cat team has been one of the most visible entities in the police department, so for him to suggest cutting that, reducing that, kind of questions, I'm not trying to say why, I'm just going to be getting more information to understand something, you know, for it to be the most visible port in your department, especially in our community, like when the dumb man was killed last week, we went out with the cat team, and Cam was enabled to see if he had information or the shoes or anything to submit to the police department. So they've been really visible in our, especially our inner-city communities. And even like, for example, right here, the Parks and Rec, eliminating internet service for three community centers. I mean, we always talk about how, you know, most of our inner-city kids don't have computers in their home, you know, the thought of reducing that, and now like this registration of schools is all online, the services we do are all online, and then we're going to take about our community centers. Some stuff, let me say, doesn't make sense, but I would just have to just get more information on that.
Or does that make sense? Because when we get our information, are there three community centers that those computers maybe are not used as much?
Exactly, right, so more...
Are they sitting in community centers where the kids don't go?
Yes.
Because there may be community centers that aren't utilized by the children, or you were talking about pottery making one time, that community center. So, you know, did they give us this because there are three community centers that really aren't being utilized by those kids?
It says homework on homework. Anyway, so just like, but Councilman Peril's, more information on certain areas lack that, it just kind of, doesn't kind of make sense to me really good, so I can understand your picture better.
And just remember, these are submitted.
Yes, yeah, I understand.
Not submitted, not submitted, you know, yeah.
This is what, that was selected, to maybe consider eliminating. So you can use all kinds of verbiage.
Well, but what's...
But it is what it is. It's the 2% that's been projected.
Identify.
Yes. Or, this, I hope, wasn't an adventure in feudalism, something futile by our department heads that probably met with their leadership folks and came up with these. This, I don't take this very seriously. I don't care what the verbiage is about it, you know? But this is what our hardworking employees who have gone away, not received the cost of living for, it'll be two years this year, has submitted to us.
Well, that brings up a question I've got, that's all right. When do you expect the compensation study to come in? You mentioned this early on.
The salaries study, we're about midway through it. We should see...
For this budget cycle?
Probably during this budget cycle.
Okay. So make sure that people know, that the consultants know if it's not finished during this budget cycle, they've got a real problem.
Well, the fact of the matter is, just remember, this is a market study. This is not, this is not to talk about an across-the-board increase for all employees. It is to make sure that we are pointing our positions and recruiting and competing in the market at the appropriate salary.
But what's really going to happen is there's going to be a big salary increase asking, because I'm sure we're below market in multiple layers.
But Turner, I would say, because we have, you have appropriated money over the past few years for some very large departments, and we have made market adjustments over the past few years in Public Works, Parks and Rec, and Social Services, which are our three biggest departments.
We really worked on public safety before that, because I've been sitting here for 16 years, I know. We worked and we honed in on public safety, too. That was one of the first departments before we moved to the others.
I've never seen a compensation study come back and say, yeah, he does great.
And it's based on who you hired. I think it's based on who you hired, so I don't know anything about this group. If you hired somebody that their whole resume is, you know, like community planning, I mean, if their whole thing is designing roundabouts, guess what? Your plans are going to say, hey, your roundabouts will fix it. If you, the guy's only tool is a hammer, he's going to see every problem as a nail. And that's what they're going to normally say is, hey, we need to give everybody more money, because that's what they do. I don't think this one is that.
And that's what keeps the police chief up a nice compensation. So, you know, we may think we fixed it, but I don't know, we'll just have to see what the study comes back. I just want to warn that there could be a big ask out there.
I understand it is always a moving target as well.
Oh, yeah. And then the other piece that, I don't know, I'm sorry, I didn't dive in as far into this presentation, are we going to talk about schools at all?
Yeah, we have a placeholder for schools. There is nothing...
We'll get to that.
Yes, but there's nothing to prove about the school board.
I just think it's really important, last year, I think we missed a communication opportunity with the school board and with the superintendent or Dr. Mast, I can't remember if it was Dr. Mast or Dr. Bragan.
The Bragan.
So I think we missed an opportunity. No, it wasn't, because I got a call from the chair of the school board concerned that we missed a communication opportunity, and I think it's incumbent on us to set the expectation for the school board and let them know so we don't, so there's no surprises either. We got surprised last year.
And I think that's a good point, that they can do that ahead of time, because that's, you know, what Donna was talking about, less positions and less positions over a year, 13 years, or how many of your years, 13 less positions, I mean. I've seen on the other side, growing positions. You know, I've asked, we've got numbers in the finance committee, where we've seen how many over and above that were paid for in the school system, 100%. And so when there are trade-offs, that has to be a big trade-off. And if we can communicate that early, because keep in mind, at the same time, when things have been flat on the city side, you look at those numbers, they went from 30 million local to 40, to 42 million. I mean, that's big, big number increases. That could have really been a lot easier on our taxpayers and on the city side and the city budget if we kind of said, hey, let's not give so, quite so much over on that side, so...
And I think we've talked in leadership meetings with school board chair and vice chair and the current administration, where we are financially in the city. We've had those conversations in our most recent leadership meetings, and so it's...
So there's a clear expectation.
Yeah, and I have talked to the superintendent and said that, you know, I've asked for a roughly 2% decrease from all city departments, and I'm asking you for the same. I can ask all I want, but they submit, it's another story.
I know.
And, you know, and I mean, I understand, Donna, what you're saying about having had the cuts, and that's why I bring up technology, I bring up life differently as we know it. And, you know, I mean, I guess I look at the hard things of our community, like we'll cut internet service, and, you know, people, we live in the city for things like services, like trash pickup. I saw the recycling that, you know, I know folks in the county, they pay to have their trash picked up. I mean, so, you know, when we, I guess I'm like, we're looking at the soft things. I call them the soft parts of our operations, and, but like, when we look at the hard parts of our operation, we could look like a different city if we wanted to.
What does hard...
Like no trash pickup.
I see.
Like minimal, I mean, really, I mean, we could, we could look like the county if we wanted to, we don't want to. But I think our citizens need to realize some hard, some harsh reality of the services we all generally use that could be cut back on. You know, days, routes, what are the hard numbers for that? You know, we had a person that talked about, well, on our street, we'll collect money and do snow removal, I think, was a suggestion we got, and then the city can reimburse back folks. You know, we have a process, we have priorities, but I just like, I mean, I want, I think all of this is soft, because we don't really, we don't want to hurt people, but I think where are the things that everyone in the city uses that could be impacted if we reduced, or if we changed how we did business in these ways?
I think, Turner, you make a good point. And for those four of us who were here seven years ago, we had some agonizing conversations about how to cut because of the way the budget situation was. At this point, we fortunately are not in that same dire strait, but in response to my question, I think you have said that you feel comfortable, now that the department heads have come in response to your obituary, submitted their proposition, and we've looked at it, and we are uncomfortable with aspects of it, you are in a position to go back and ask those department heads to look at it a different way and see if they can get to the same point without such drastic elements of the submissions they presented to us.
I have had that conversation, I can tell you, with one department. I have done some other deeper dives, actually, with the police chief, and he has an alternative to one element, again, submissions, development, and...
I mean, we're talking about doing things, and we can't do anything now. You're in a position to possibly do that, and we can move to the next step. And I know you're going to assess the three options that you have, given how much option A is going to cost, and what the gap will be, what the gap will be on option two, and what the gap will be that has to be breached on option three. And that's a good discussion, we can have to, but I don't think we can get all of the information that Turner so correctly said we need to get. You can get it in some degrees.
So Ronnie, am I hearing that you have been back and you've had this conversation with the department heads, and you still have this? Today, are you looking for us, because you have brought this to us, this is your next step, bringing this to us? Do you want us today to say, okay, CAT team's off the list, give us something else? Rec centers, community center elimination, that's off the list, you know, Parks and Rec, give us something else? Is that what you're looking for? I'm just trying to get clarity.
I hope not.
I hope not. Or, we're telling you, we might need more information.
Well, and you will get all of that as part of my, as part of my proposal, right? So you will get a balanced budget delivered to you for consideration on March 13. I'm trying to get a little bit of a witness test on where you are, and this conversation is very informative. It's not do or don't, it's informative.
We had a, just a sidebar, we had a simulation of budget houses at the mayor's youth council on Sunday, Vine and Donna came, and they gave some of these scenarios. 30 minutes later, they had, had a balanced budget, they had raised a couple of taxes, but they eliminated, kept a few eliminations, reinstated some. Just want to give you, no pressure there. That was the 15, 16, and 17-year-olds did it in 30 minutes, but they did...
They were limited.
Yeah. So, I told them they needed to come and let you all know what some of their suggestions are, she may be at a work session, so, but they, they went through some of the simulations, said, thank you all, I think that was a great exercise, but I just want to let my fellow council members know that they came up with it in 30 minutes.
And I think it was helpful to take the comments that we're giving, also with Vice Mayor, tweeting just mentioned about certain services, a lot of people like the police force, the unemployment person, or something like that, because we're giving this information that you can see here what we are saying, and look at all the departments, and see where certain things could be combined, or changed, or altered in some way to get to the budget point.
And we talked about that several years ago, with regarding schools and the city, saying, rather than having two of the same kind of jobs, we'll combine some of those things, because the, a lot of the savings isn't going to be on the guy that's, you know, moving the shovel, the snow, or picking up the trash, it's going to be on the hierarchy, the bureaucracy, the management, where you're spending a lot of money on, you know, managing different departments. And if there's a way still to do something back, you know, one human resource division over there and over here that maybe totally needs forum, but, and Sterling just mentioned what Turner said the other day about the public information officer, in our city departments versus all the to Joanne, that's...
And I, I kind of agree with you there, and I know that years ago, when I was actually the public information officer for the schools, and then I was on the school board, we did that, you know, it really came down to, can we share cost and paper? You know, what are the things, not just in personnel, but in trucks, and how we, you know, move around the city with our maintenance departments and all of that. And so I think we got down to pretty lean of saying that they absolutely need who they need, and we absolutely need who we need. I think it even came down to difference in certifications, and folks, you know, who you're hiring, and how you're making sure they are who they are, and all of that. But, you know, I do, there are some areas, I think that you're right, we can find some benefit. I think there are some areas that we have to, still, even though we did it years ago, we may not be in that same point, but unless we're willing to go out there and really find some creative new ways that we don't know about yet, to build revenue, bring revenue in, and the world around us is reducing opportunities for that. And so I just, and, you know, people are going to watch this, and people are going to look at, you know, what are they doing, and how are they doing it? And, you know, we want to be secure, we want to be safe, we want to be efficient, we want to provide services, but, I mean, the things that I'm seeing, we haven't gotten through all the departments yet, are off the backs of the most vulnerable citizens in our community, it seems like, whether it be children, whether it be our most impoverished neighborhoods. You know, let's take a look at some of the bigger dives, you know, the folks who can afford to take their trash, you know, have trucks and can go down to the, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, I know people that pay $50 a month in the counties for the pickup of their trash, you know? And so when we say we're losing people to that, I mean, folks have to be realistic that some of these services, they're costly, that we all utilize and joy, and we need for our infrastructure needs and all of that, but it's not just the schools that have, you know, to, what we look at for the cuts. I mean, there are some, there are some services within our city that a lot of people benefit from, that maybe, you know, we should look at those.
See, I think this is a great example of someone, especially the economic development tourism, you see, that there are two things there that are listed there that look like that department did take a look. Look at this, realizing efficiencies from the merger of economic tourism, so that efficiency, and eliminate, re-putraying positions that are no longer needed. To me, that makes a lot of sense, and I think that's the sort of thing that we're probably asking for. Now, the top one, that could be debatable, you know, that executive director, you know, we funded that for, as long as I can remember. You know, maybe that, I don't know, they're going in a new direction, I probably need a little more information on that.
I guess with that, that could probably be because the downtown has now changed, as you said, it's grown, and so now there's a whole lot more downtown businesses, where there used to be three, now there's hundreds that can all contribute and help pay for their downtown person, as opposed to the city, you know, taking taxes from Timberlake Road and funding a position down there.
This is a good example.
I think that could, I think that first one is actually probably a fairly decent thing, and it could justify, based on the growth.
Something, a kind of theme that we've seen across all this is reducing positions, reducing positions. We may want to consider, and I know this is in the opposite direction, but somewhat of an investment in our IT group that we looked at earlier, because is there a way, getting to what Turner was saying, that we can invest in technology to increase efficiency? And, you know, maybe, maybe there's, that can be a strategic investment that's going to produce longer-term results, because I don't see it getting any better. We've got to be more and more efficient somehow. That's the only comment.
I'll preview something that you'll hear at your February 13 work session, just a presentation on how we respond to weather-related events. We are installing automated vehicle locator equipment in all of our, all of our public works trucks, so we can use the data that is collected from where those trucks are, so we can have more efficient routes and do a better job. So that's a way that we're going to be using technology. We don't, it'll take us a while to analyze the data to figure out how to make the changes. I don't know that in the end, it will reduce employees who deliver the services. We're such a service-oriented organization, that's what governments do.
So you have these chips put in the trucks, maybe you could have these chips put in the employees. Oh, wait, that's futuristic. Add your hands or...
Reminds me of that...
That's very visionary.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, totally. Reminds me of that drug commercial a while ago, that if you felt bad, then you'd take the, take the drugs and feel better, and the image was this first, this robot walking around a table. The market seemed to nod to it, take this drug, become a wireless robot. Sorry, sorry for the aside.
Next slide, yeah, go ahead.
Go to the next one?
Yes, please. And in communications and marketing, they eliminated Lynchburg's listening software, which diminishes departments' ability to communicate with citizens, reduce marketing funding, which impacts the city's ability to promote its services and programs, being proactive in addressing issues and providing support to departments that don't have marketing Other major highlights, and again, this is, please, I should have capitalized, placeholder for schools. And just for this presentation, and just to fill a number in that hole, we did leave it the same as 2018. The school board did approve the CIP submission for schools, and it did, there's, it was included in their CIP, 713,000 for school buses. We know that's really part of their operating budget, but for, but that was, that did come from schools. But that's the only number we have, is their CIP projects, which I'll show you later, and the school buses for 713,000. That is a placeholder, so...
So that's actually, so you're looking at 840,000, with the placeholder being the same, as opposed to a 2% reduction. School buses are, as you said, it's operating expense. So you're really looking at 840,000 plus 713,000, just in the basic increase compared to the city, that is a 2% reduction. So that's 1.5 million dollars more, relatively speaking, even though the 42 million is the same as last year, but if everybody else has cut 2%, that's another 840 plus, the additional...
But again, we have...
Totally understand.
We don't have anything from the school board, that's just literally...
But those two numbers up there that sound good, that's actually a 1.5 million dollar increase, so...
So maybe, maybe the placeholder, the message we give to them...
Placehold is terrible.
Yeah, it's less than that.
I just needed to put in...
The direction, I mean, the communication against the schools was, I need 2% reduction. That doesn't mean, as it has a tax...
That is a political statement.
Which is not, what their anticipation, as Turner said, is ahead of time, and tell, and let them know that we know that school bus additional is not capital, like was tried to be presented in the last budget, that is operational. And so, when that's the increase in operations, that's an increase in the operational budget, so...
So they were told that the placeholder should have been two percent decrease.
And, the, the, there shouldn't have been the extra...
Should have been the reduced...
School buses.
I think, personally, if I had told them that, then, and we're just doing the placeholder, nothing that they've told us about, then it should have been a two percent of that forty-two million, to be fair to them.
Okay.
You know, not to get everyone all riled up, they've asked for one point blank more, you know?
Yeah, because...
Because they haven't asked.
If I'm a school board, if I'm a school board member, I read this in the paper and say, oh yeah, the city's got a placeholder of forty-two, that means we're looking to ask for a little bit more than that.
And so they can go down to that.
Can you change that right now?
That's eight hundred and forty thousand less than...
They're not balancing...
Margaret, that's not, that's not a political statement.
Well, what it's, as Turner's saying, is, you know, because if they anticipate less, you know, they'll make the budget. I mean, we appointed them, and they're going to try to do a good job, they've understood that they're, you know, need to do what they can do, without having just more and more and more money and more and more personnel, the sooner that they start on that, the better, especially with the new superintendent, great, good time to start.
And I did have a discussion with the school CFO, Anthony Beckles, and let him know that I was putting a number in this PowerPoint, but that was in no way an indication or a suggestion of what they should present to the school board, that we did, and Bonnie talked to Larry Massey as well, with, that we were requesting their submission with the two percent cut.
And the two percent, you understand, the school bus is...
It's about one point one million dollars. Right, yes, yes.
That needs to be, that is zero number.
Yeah, but, well, because honestly, in 2018, there was no school bus money. So that, that number, the forty-two million, did not...
So it should be forty million, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, so...
Be one point five million less, if you want to add seven thirteen for schools, you know, just to be even with the rest of the...
That's the process. I don't know if we can get out of that, but I don't know how old the process is.
I'm not saying don't buy them, I'm just saying that the allocation is, it's an operational expense, is what I'm saying, it's got to be honest with you.
And can I just throw out there too, because we, we look at this school's budget kind of in isolation, if you will, because it's schools, and we're just educating kids, and, I mean, not just, but we're educating kids, and that's, but, I mean, I think, like the presentation we had last week, and what I keep hearing, is that schools are an, an economic driver, and so, or a tool. And so, I think, I, I would like to start looking at schools differently, and how we have, our schools are set up, maybe? I mean, this is, this is higher-level conversation than just, you know, the money we appropriate and that sort of thing. But is the money we are appropriating helping as far as business retention, as far as sending employees locally, that, you know, students decide, like, creating opportunities for that? I mean, you know, I, knowing Sterling and I both were on the board, you know, we just think of the mandates that we have to do, and we think of the requirements of students matriculating, you know, K through twelve, and, and we have some pre-K. But, as a city, because it is such a large budget, and, and because we are having to rethink and reimagine, I mean, to me, we should drive some of that conversation, as far as, you know, our students are coming out, are they coming out workforce-ready, are they coming out credentialed, are they coming out ready to, you know, that's a part of our, you know, responsibility with the school system as well. And so, you know, that could mean positions, that could mean departments, that could mean how are we, we can't tell the board what to do, and that's not, you know, we know that, let's start, I know that. But, they, they, we, we can begin to plant the seeds that, you know, it's a serious part of our economy, it's why businesses relocate, families relocate, so, you know, what are the mandates versus what do we need to do differently? Are there areas to, to condense and collaborate, you know? I think the conversation of information technology, you know, schools have a mandate of software and technology, cybersecurity is huge for everyone, but, I mean, you know, they're an economic tool for us, in the sense, and I don't think everyone really realizes that, all the time.
And it's students that come out, and that's what she's saying. Out of Harvard, there was a study, that's recently done, that not only is the workforce of the future need to graduate, sixty-seven percent plus need to have something post-secondary. They need to go on to a lot of those certification programs, those two years, four years, because that's what our future will be needing. So, even if we get them to graduation day, and they graduate, they might not necessarily have the skills that the jobs of the future. So we also have to keep that in the forefront, if we're, if we're thinking about economic development and the workforce here in Lynchburg in the future of the students. So, I, I totally agree that that needs to be a combined conversation, do we need to think differently, even while the kids are in school, getting dual degrees in certification in technology, just like they get a college degree, an associate's degree, some of the kids, because they go to CBC early. Maybe they should go early to get those, and we get ahead of the curve here in Lynchburg. They should get those technical, uh, technical certifications that are needed for our future jobs, to make us attractive. I, I just think it's a conversation about economic development and the workforce we need to have, and we thought we need to have it together, and sit down and say, hey, we're all here because we're looking for Lynchburg's future, and we're not here to reduce, to say, you use too much money, you've got too many employees, we're here to work together, to see what we can do to come up with a good plan for our future for economic development. It's, it's rethinking.
Well, the two, the two are absolutely right, you're exactly right about that. But if you want to back track, we're, our ability to cross the influence curriculum is severely limited, obviously, but what we can do is make that point to the school board, that this is important to us, appoint people to the school board that will carry that strategic thing. Your thing is strategically, and, and maybe the criticism is that the school board's thinking tactically, just trying to figure out how they, type of A and T, and just, in a pack of living, get it year to year, where we want a school board being thinking out ten years ahead. So then that's, they're coming down to us to make sure that we've got the right people in place on the school board, they're not strategically, and also, if they are not, then we use, the, the, the only other tool we have is funding, and how we direct them or encourage them through funding.
And, and that, and, well, I...
And that's a blunt instrument.
And I was about to say, I mean, I, I agree with that. I, I think it's the, it's the sharing of the message, I think it's connecting the dots for folks, whoever we put into the seat, that this is what we're thinking as priorities for our city, if we're, we're putting the energy and the investment into poverty, and if we're saying, our neighborhoods, we want revitalization, we want, you know, folks to come out that, that have the ability to go into the higher-wage-paying jobs, that has to start when we have them six, seven, eight hours a day in our schools, and we have to say, what, where are there limitations for folks being able to get into these skills? And, and is it built into scheduling, is it built into how we prioritize the career technical, you know, mandates or changes, and that sort of thing? I, I just, I, I really think we, but we have to start in the conversation. I'm bringing it up at this table because we're talking budget. And so, if there are themes, again, that are line items in the budget, that are supposed to be affecting achievement gaps, graduation rates, and we're not seeing that, that measurement of success, or, or it's not as measurable as we would like to see it, then I think this is the venue to have the conversation and to start the dialogue.
All right, so brainstorming is, I'm getting these little random ideas all morning, I apologize. Could it, and, again, just a, just a thought, could we reserve some funds for schools, and in, in our, in our budget, not in, not in their budget, but in our budget, reserve some like schools, give them whatever we determine is appropriate operating budget, and say, if you meet target goals A, B, and C, we'll give you the reserve if you do.
I guess, maybe an idea, one thing though, I know, I know we're talking about, you know, schools being an economic driver, the reality is, it's not necessarily schools, it's education, that's the economic...
Yes, true.
And so with that, we understand one element of schools, you know, which is the public schools. There's a, a growing segment with the declining numbers in the, in the public school, there's a growing number, and the private schools, the home schools. And so with that, we want to make sure that we're educating, and our kids are getting educated, that's what helps the economy, it's not necessarily just saying only one avenue or, just like, we're talking about Liberty University, and Mary Jane pointed out, that they're not the only, you know, college in Lynchburg. Public schools are, public high schools and public elementary are not the only ones. I mean, and, and it tells you something when people are leaving and going elsewhere, that kind of makes you kind of question, well, why?
Pretty good analogy, actually, where Lynchburg, Lynchburg City Schools is to OU as to the independent schools, to the, the smaller colleges.
Well, I think I probably have a lot more conversation behind that, that I'll choose to save for later. But, you know, I, I think we are mandated for our public schools to have the best public schools we can, and it's my goal that we have the best public schools for all students who choose to attend those public schools. And so that means for me, preparing them for our future, that we already know with Amazon Go, service-level jobs are being eliminated. And so, getting folks to think on a higher level of thinking, of where are the jobs, where are the industry sectors? Yes, we can continue to have the basic SOL, you know, academics and that sort of thing, but if we look at our growing careers, and where, and how are students being made aware of that, and, and making choices for secondary, post-secondary education, that's the thing that I'm, I'm talking about. It's, it's still, we're not handing out, we're not just giving the pass and saying, figure, you know, we, we have to be more intentional on how we expect folks to navigate people through this system, and it's not just thinking to June graduation, it's thinking industry sector, it's thinking where are the growing fields at, what's being decreased, so that students who are just coming out with a high school diploma, they're not going to find as many jobs out there that can take care of a family. And so, that, you know, that conversation, it begins back in elementary school, it begins with parents, it begins of how we use our guidance staff, you know, are, are there ways that we are doing things that we've been doing for hundreds of years the same way, that's not working, and it's not preparing, you know, this major funding piece right here, for the future that we're going to need in our city, arts and creative, if we're going to make that important, and, and there's a business side to that. I mean, I'm just, I'm not just thinking the hard, you know...
Yes, but does in fact go back, you know, to say, what I recently just stated, and do we in the future, we need to meet with the school board folks, with, and their staff, and do some of these reimagining exercises? We can sit here and talk about it, and I think we're pretty much on the same page about this. I think we need to look at that as a possible gathering in our future, which we have not had a retreat with the school board this year, instead of doing, oh, here's what we've done, we sit down and we have that conversation, that futuristic-type conversation, about do we continue to do business like we've always done business in the public school sector, when the world around us are changing? So, I'm suggesting that in the months ahead, if we are going to look, and if we are going to meet and have a retreat together, that we talk about this very thing.
And not be lectured to?
And not be lectured to, and not have a dog and pony show about all the things that are going on. We both get on the same page and say, we are looking at our students of the future, our students who are presently sitting from kindergarten to twelfth grade, what else do we need to do differently? How do we need to do things differently to prepare them for what we already are seeing is a changing environment, for the work world, for our community, to be right here on, on point, where, where we need to be, to be there.
Is it critically important to have that retreat when the new superintendent has her boots on the ground here?
I, I don't know, you know, maybe she should come into it, I, you know, I don't want to wait till next year to have that conversation, no.
Quite frankly, because it should be...
Or be here, May first.
It, it should be the fact that the, the school board helps directly lead, you know, the superintendent, is, I mean, kind of, I didn't realize until Mary Jane pointed it out, that she didn't have as much, you know, financial education, or training, or whatever background, and, and so that, the person that you get to lead should be the person that can maybe fix some of their problems or shortcomings, and...
I, I, a person coming into our school system, you know, maybe she's here, May first, I, I would like to have this sooner than later, simply because if we've asked them to reduce their budget by two percent, what are some of the things I'm sure they're planning for next year already, and some of their curriculum pieces, and some of the way they do business? I think we should have that retreat sooner than later, and if Crystal can come into that, great, I mean, I think it would be a wonderful way to maybe introduce her to, to, here we are, and what we're thinking right at the moment.
And it can also point out, all, you know, over these last several years, as she gets to the slide a little bit later, about the increase in funding with the increase in positions, what actually did they get for it? Like Trin had pointed out, I mean, if you're doing this, and you're getting great, and you're much better achievement, fabulous, but if you're doing these things and not, well, maybe we ought to, not necessarily have to go back to a hundred years, but we can go back three years and say, well, maybe this didn't work.
Well, and there's some, and there have been, and I do follow this, you know, graduation rates are up, SOLs, some, we have more accredited schools, there are some, some real positive things, but then there are some other things that are very glaring too, that aren't so positive. So I think, starting on that, how can we move all this over to the positive side? I think, not to say, if, if, if she's back there writing, now this what she is, that there haven't been some positive points, there have been, that have occurred over the last few years, but there, there's a ways to go, Stone, and I think we all agree with that.
Just, just another thought, you pointed out, you know, we're talking about strategically expectations, and then the new superintendent, maybe it'd be useful to get an understanding, maybe you guys know from your, your meetings with, with school leadership, do we know what the expectations of the new superintendent are? Meaning, is she supposed to have that vision to take the schools, and the stuff, what, I, I don't know what they were promising, I know I gave feedback, I think we all gave feedback on what, what we thought, but, but what did they actually select and look for? And what's, what's the expectation of the new superintendent coming in? I don't know, I'd, I'd like to know.
Could that be a part of our retreat together?
Sure, that may be a very sensitive conversation, yeah, in front of, in front of the new superintendent, you know, our expectation is one thing, and theirs is another, so, just a thought.
And, and I think too, we, we can have a lot of retreat and discussion and that kind of thing, I think it is the new superintendent that's going to direct staff to get it done. And so, I mean, I, I look at, you know...
But the board should direct the superintendent.
The board should direct the superintendent, and the superintendent is the direction that they, the superintendent directs the staff to get it done.
Right.
And so, I, I guess, I, you know, we, we've had some visioning retreats, and some visioning meetings, and, and some, and we also can look at the hard numbers, and know where we need to go, or where we need to be. And so, I don't know how much more reflection and dialogue and conversation, and, you know, we can be, other than, we want a certain percentage of students who are graduating at this level. We want a certain percent of students who are graduating and moving on to secondary at this level, across the board. You know, I want to, I want to create kumbaya, I want a vision, I want to do all of that, but we know there are some deficits, and so, we, we have to lay out the hard line and the hard numbers for the board, for the superintendent, and then beyond, for the staff. And, you know, as far as finances and experience levels, you know, I don't expect the city manager to know exactly everything Donna knows, and Donna vice versa to know everything. That's why we have the two of them who work together, but the responsibilities are different. And so, that's something that is across the board, in, in all of our areas. But I, I just know that we're building this framework of a city for future generations, we're talking about intergenerational poverty, we're talking about, and, and at some point, there has to be, this is the hard line, and this is what we expect coming across it, you know, or reaching out to it. And so, I, I, whoever's in the seat, and however we get there, but the, you know, community really has some of the same issues that have come throughout the years, twenty years, of people meeting around the same issues. They've improved, yes, but they're not where they should be over twenty years, and whether...
That's the opening.
And that's the opening.
That's the opening. That's the opening. That's the, okay. And then how can we get to where we want to be?
And, and I mean, I look at, you know, you look at people choosing, Jeff, you mentioned private and, you know, I mean, some people are choosing online. You know, we've had online academic education in our public schools for a lot of years. Are we fully capitalizing on that for students who are at a deficit or not? For students who need to learn differently? Are we capitalizing on it? Is that an economic opportunity for us? And so I think that takes staff thinking differently. That's not just the leadership level. It's the leadership pushing, you know, into the staff. But I think that as a whole, we're paying a lot of people, as Jeff said, and delivery of education is different these days. And maybe it has to be different for some students. But there's opportunities there, use of our buildings, you know, for a lot of things we're talking about in the city as far as the poverty initiative and other initiatives. We own a lot of school buildings. So how are we utilizing our school buildings to maximize what we want in the future of our community? So the conversation to me is just a bit bigger and I just throw it out here because it's about budget. But it's also about, you know, beyond visioning. And then people have to understand that this is the reality we're in. And then we come back next year and, you know, some conversations are hard to have and that's why I'm Greenwood with Ann's partner over here in some ways. Because some conversations are hard to have, but we're in evolving and in a changing society. And when we're talking about preparing kids and families, that's several and layers of conversation that we have to prepare them about. And I think if we're trying to move the Poverty to Progress Initiative, we've got subcommittees working. We're talking all of these areas that affect, we have to look at education and they are. We have an education subcommittee. There's some great things that are occurring and coming out of that. But there's just a bigger strategic vision that we, I think we have to start laying the groundwork before we go into those conversations.
I know. Next week, I'm actually going to be in Harlem in New York for one week and going to observe the children, Harlem Children's Center, which is a school for children who live in Harlem. It has a 100% graduation rate and 100% post-secondary.
Placement?
So I'm going to glean a lot of information from what they do with wraparound services, what they do educationally, because I'm never going to be happy till we have that rate here in Lynchburg. And so I'll bring back some information about what they do there with a hard-to-reach population in the center of a city. But, you know, maybe we look at other models that are used, that are successful across our country. And, because I don't have the users, this is tough stuff that we're talking about. And, but, you know, every child here in our community deserves a good education. You know, if they can't have the home school, they can't go to private school. Public school is what they have to go to. And therefore, I want to do the very best. And I think what we're talking about, there is an opportunity here to meet the school board and maybe not have a kumbaya session, but not have a finger pointing session either. It is what it is. We're here, they're volunteers and in many senses, we're volunteers. We're public servants in this community and we want a better Lynchburg. That's our common ground and we start there and we move forward of how we can get the best in Lynchburg for our kids. And how can we do that and try to be on the same page? Let me talk back to Derek.
We've got the first two, the one and a half million dollars we just got.
Yeah, the Blue Ridge Regional Jail, we have a positive number here. We are decreasing the per diem cost of the city, $604,196 from 2018. And I will tell you, in 2018 so far, we have a surplus that will come back to the city at this point. So we're, we have a positive trend right now.
What are they doing that we can take lessons from?
It's less, it's less, it's all based on the inmate population.
It's based on inmate population, I can say. And I will tell you, the driving force for this reduction is the work that our community corrections and free trial services are doing. And alternatives to incarceration.
And a lot of the incarceration, of course, is centered around the drug and the opioid problems. And it's an understanding that that problem is, I'll say this gently, might be more in counties.
I can tell you that for the members of the Blue Ridge Regional Jail, the city of Lynchburg is the only one who has a declining population.
Yes. And I think, I don't know if drug court has anything to do with that. I don't know.
Not yet.
Not yet. But some of the efforts, it just has, like you said, hats off to them, but there's some more early intervention preventing things going on.
And that's a measurable tangible result.
Our line of duty, we've had several public safety that have been injured. So that is going up about $110,000 a year. We're currently paying about $220,000 a year for our line of duty claims. And then our reserve for contingency as the placeholder is the 1.2 million for our, to meet our financial policy.
So what's that, what's purpose of having that on? All these are the, that's something we've had forever.
Just to let you know that we are budgeting to make sure that we have that reserve for contingency to meet our financial policy.
Well, that was the preface that you said at the beginning of this. We didn't put on there that we're meeting our financial policies and so that's an understood. So why is it, it's on there for a reason.
Because it's a big number.
It's a big number, but it's always on there. And so normally we end the year with quite a bit of it in there. If there's 800,000 left, you only have to, you know, put back. That's why we try to, as the finance committee, try to limit what goes out of it.
Right. The other expenditure highlight that I will add that is not on there, this is a re-benchmarking year for Virginia retirement system rates. And about a year ago, we were getting some early indications that our rate was going to go down a bit. Unfortunately, because of some.
Upper level management salary increases rates going up.
Because of some injuries and disabilities that are longer term than any of us would like. Our VRS rate is actually going up like 0.03%. So we were really waiting with bated breath to see what that rate was going to be. And we were pretty disappointed last week when it went up a little bit.
We were hoping for a decrease.
And is our contribution, well, I guess that didn't do anything. Our contributions, our VRS employees contributing to some VRS increase that's.
Five percent?
So that hasn't changed.
It has not changed that. Nope.
Have they given back our unfunded liabilities on that? On the VRS? Like our GAZB, whatever that's requirement to them?
No, we'll, we'll still have to report this in our CAFR.
But is that, is that shown, it's gone increased? Our preliminary numbers or maybe I've got that.
I can't, I don't, I'd have to look. I don't want to talk off the cuff.
Okay. She said that she thought the numbers, our contribution rate was going up. Just wondering if our.
Unfunded liability is going up?
Our unfunded liability went up. That's why our contribution.
Well, there's been discussion in the General Assembly of trying to fully fund that. But I don't know off the top of my head where they are on that. I know the schools rate went down a little bit statewide, but not a lot.
So we want to just quickly go through just some snapshot scenarios. They're not options, they're just scenarios and just give you order of magnitude.
Can you back up the one, I alluded to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Schools, this is just schools history over the past five years.
So it is 12:22. Before we go to this, do we want us to go get our lunch and then come back and do the working lunch? Because we, at 12:15, we're supposed to start lunch.
How quick is the scenario?
We think we can, we think we can get through this quickly. But it depends on how much you guys want to talk.
So it seems like we're talking quite effectively, which is wonderful.
Right. It's wonderful. I think it's, I think this is one of the better retreats we have.
I think it's really good. Thank you. So do we want to just draft? Do we want to just get through this? Is that, is that the general consensus?
Was it five minutes or what?
Well, this is, this is just really just the history of schools. Noting again that the school board has not acted for 2019. You know, and Jeff, you're correct, some years we had put school buses incorrectly in CIP. This has taken all that money and showing it as they're operating. So buses are in all these numbers. And this is just telling the difference between submitted, adopted, and what that difference was. So in 17 and 18, we did not fully fund the school board's request.
So actually, so much, so the, based on your placeholder, the placeholder should have been 2% less than the 41 million.
We understand.
Not the 42. So that gained, it just got a lot bigger.
Well, yeah, we understand.
Yeah, got that. Okay. Just really quickly letting you run you through just these scenarios. If we use our projected revenues and we took all of the submitted expenses, our gap, then we would need to solve this $564,000.
That's, that's accepting the whole 2% across the board or whatever.
Which I think is kind of telling that we knew our revenues were not coming in like we thought. And so the thought was, you know, we're going to have to reduce something somehow. And I think that's pretty telling that that 2% is about what we needed to cut. If we were just using current revenues and figuring the rest out.
No new programs, no new expenditures. Next. This scenario, we added back in just as part of our thinking process and to present something to you, we added back in public safety. So that means we added back in the police department submitted reductions, the fire department submitted reductions, and the emergency services 911 submitted reductions. That increases the gap to nearly $2 million. And then if we restore everything that was submitted, the gap is 2.7. Just frame of reference for you. Next one. Parking lot, we don't know what's going to happen with federal funding or state funding. Compensation continues to be a concern. We know we'll be waiting for the impact of the results of the salary study. Healthcare costs, we just need people to be well. And there's, we don't know what the magic is to that because our healthcare costs continue to increase. We've heard the importance of a social media coordinator. And I believe Trenae mentioned it earlier, cyber security is also a growing concern.
Can I just go back to that healthy care cost? Because, you know, we have a prevention nurse practitioner for preventive health type thing. And I know we do not have that.
Now, we do. We still are operating the healthcare clinic across the street in the Monument Terrace Building. I can tell you that we are considering discontinuing that service because it is not being used harsh, very, to the tune of what we are paying for it. The people who use it the most are the people that are closest to it, which means that city hall people are primarily the users of that clinic. There are alternatives now. We have with our new healthcare provider Anthem instead of, we moved from Piedmont to Anthem. Anthem has a mobile health app that people can go online using technology, right? And get diagnosed and get prescriptions prescribed online. So we are really pushing that within the organization to get employees signed up to use that app. And we're looking for alternatives to the clinic in terms of wellness.
Okay, thank you.
Bonnie, so you're saying with regard to the scenario one, if revenues are not, do not come at a vulnerable level you project, we really need a 2.2% reduction, not a 2% reduction.
Yeah, probably. I mean, we need to have some evaluation. And that's, that's taking every cut and leaving schools flat. I mean, schools is a big question mark here, right?
Schools is now, what I just calculated, it's 2.186 million because it's not including the 2%. And it should have been over last year's 41 million as opposed to 42 million. Plus you've added in 713,000 buses. That's 2.186 million. If you give them the same 2% as the rest of the city. So that's just.
I hear you.
Centaurus paribus.
I assure you, next year, there won't be a placeholder.
No, that's part of, that's part of the submission.
I'm sitting in this chair. There is not a belief schools have.
Okay, so calculated per, half error on our part.
No, I'm just saying.
I heard you the first time.
Some of us are overmatched. It takes longer.
All right, so I've got, Jeff, another, another random idea. So we talked about it last meeting a couple of weeks ago about taxing or what the state would allow us to do to tax Airbnb, basically. We determined that it wasn't, or I guess from the service level, determined that from the level of tax received, that the expense to assess it looked like it was a de minimis return, if any at all. But could we look at these as businesses and adjust and look at that as an individual assessment? Because if somebody's producing rental income, do, could that possibly be a better way to look at it? If there are already existing programs, such as if somebody's got a house, if the house is assessed for $100,000, yet the business is generating something that, that basically could be calculated at a greater rate than that, then maybe we assess it at a greater rate. Because it's a business.
That like the volume registration program, that right?
And it works like basically 60,000 of expense versus possibly getting 30,000. And we're having difficulty collecting some other taxes. It's going to be.
No, it's, no, no, no. I'm not saying we do the.
But you would never know.
But would we need to change our zoning? Would we need to change our zoning? Because I thought in some zoning way we're zoned that you can have businesses in certain neighborhoods.
No, possibly. I don't know.
I don't know either.
I'm just.
I'm just throwing that out.
Trying to come up with ideas. Well, the reason for that, I was last over at this downtown building to be renovated and they say that the first floor will be car space while the second and third floors will house rooms for rent, possibly through the website Airbnb.
Oh, is that what?
Yeah, that's what made me think about it.
Just a, just a heads up. When the mayor's youth council did this, they came up with $2 million by raising the meals tax one cent. Because for every one cent, it generates.
2.2 million.
So that's how they got their budgets to, actually, they balanced their budget and had money left over. That, I think that's the only tax most.
They raised the real estate one cent.
And that was only 900 because they wanted to give a pay, a cost of living increase to the employees. They wanted to make sure our employees, so that was, I was amazed how quickly those kids got that.
We did not give them nearly as much information as.
Yeah.
Sam and Sa?
Next one.
Yeah, cool. That's what we're doing here, right?
I know.
So this was, these are the guiding principles that we're looking to use to balance this budget. We want to balance with no new revenue requirements. We want to preserve funding for public safety. We want to continue to concentrate on the four focus areas that you identified last year, poverty, infrastructure, workforce, economic development. Tie funding to, funding decisions to 2017 national citizen survey results if possible. And it's been mentioned a lot already here, so I think we at least hit the mark on this one. Preserve quality of life programs to the extent we can. And then number six would be comply with our financial policies. Are there any other principles that you want me and staff to use to build this budget?
Can you get back on?
I'm not saying we can do all of this, but this is what we're going to work towards.
Right. Which is great. That would have helped probably before a lot of those other things came. I think that kind of helps direct. But anyway, that's good. And I wasn't picking on you, Donna, with that. I'm just saying I found the extra money.
Thank you.
But with that, the. But, but with that, the, the one thing, you know, number two, and I've been a, a strong proponent for public safety, it's, it's not necessarily preserving the funding for it just because it's the funding. We want the funding for it because of the outcome.
The program delivered.
We want to make sure we're safe and whatnot. And if we can do that with half the money, we don't need to preserve the funding. If we have to have it with that. So, so I'm, I'm not just saying, you know, keep it status quo because that's a neat number. You know, if that makes sense.
Now, the-
We want, we want the outcomes.
Maintain delivery, delivery of services to the extent possible is also-
And I realize, I realize that so many times we think that money equals outcome, but sometimes it's so totally vastly different. And so outcome is what I'm concerned with.
Something that we may want to consider is, I don't want to say prioritize, if that'd be the wrong word, but maybe identify strategic investments that will produce long-term savings. Basically through technology, but I'm sure maybe there are other ones.
I guess with that, the only, you know, the negative of that is as technology changes, you know, you really wonder, I, I thought probably about 15 years ago that most schools wouldn't be building anymore, you know, post-secondary because of online trends and whatnot. And we look right across town and there are billions being spent on bricks and mortar, which is surprising, in spite of changes and trends, so.
What I want to talk about is really asset management, such as inventory tracking and public works. I mean, is that paper process or electronic process? I, I don't know. But, but it, so that's the, the smaller stuff that I'm talking about.
One thing would be good to have-
ABL is a, is a example, right?
I'm sorry?
Automated vehicle-
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can save fuel by routing by truck routes? Yes, absolutely.
However, remember what you and I talked about, the primary roads, secondary roads, and getting to them and removing snow. And we have businesses in our community that are now listing on secondary roads, you know, and they're not happy because the roads aren't being plowed. I don't know if we need to even look at that big picture, you know, I don't know if businesses would be willing to be bumped up to the primary road. Maybe they would help us with some of that, you know, give a fund to help with snow removal. I don't know, I think we need to think differently.
Well, I, I just think you have a priority. What's, what's, it's not, not if it's an arterial or a secondary street, but what's the priority? To me, the priority is get, making work business happen.
Yes.
And maybe the priority, you know, yes, you've got people that are socked into their streets and maybe can't get out to get to work. But what are those businesses that operate 24/7, that are always shipping trucks out the door?
Yes.
We want to keep them-
We want to keep them happy.
So maybe, maybe that's the priority, not necessarily a, we got, you know, arterial street versus secondary street priority, but what's the priority for our city?
What did you say right before that?
Me? I can't remember anything else.
Identify strategic initiatives for long-term outcomes, which might be-
Maybe think of something which-
It said inventory tracking.
Inventory, inventory. So some of our, maybe there is, maybe there isn't, I don't know. Some buildings that we may own as a city, you know, we sold a building recently that I wasn't even familiar, we owned it, which, no problem.
Two buildings.
Two buildings, exactly. So maybe there's more. Maybe there's more of those buildings that we can put in the, in public, in the private hands that will be paid taxes. We'll sell it, get some money for capital. I mean, if there's those kind of things, that would be nice to track any of our, our, our real estate inventory that is unneeded and unnecessary.
I, I'd like to say that in a different way, in a, as sort of a guiding principle or just direction, to emphasize keeping and reduce, basically reduce the non-taxable property. I mean, that's a, what's, what's 23.4%? Remember 23%?
24, 25, I think.
We, we need to get that number down.
Well, I guess we-
One in every five buildings doesn't pay real estate tax.
But we can only do that with our building, so we can't say that somebody can't buy a building.
Yeah. I'm saying, but yeah, but we can't, we don't have to give it away either.
If it's ours, absolutely.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about, or the rights to, to pay. We don't have to allow other organizations a waiver on, on real estate tax either.
Again, we don't waive tax unless they're exempt from it specifically, right?
But we just, we did, no means of that, on a nonprofit organization that asked to basically have their real estate taxes waived.
Which was that?
That was the one that was-
I voted against that.
Well, I know. I'm saying, we need to not do that.
I don't think-
Okay, that can be-
Did we do it?
Oh, yes.
I'm not sure that that's a budget guiding principle because-
All right. My point is, we need to protect the-
Tax base.
In my opinion, it's not a budget guiding principle either, but that was just a tactic that I thought we need to protect.
Protect our tax base.
Absolutely, yes, that's a principle.
Bonnie, we're going to come back to this, or is this-
I'm trying to wrap this up so we can get to capital right after you get your lunch.
Which is lunch.
From my perspective, number four would not be in there as a high element. I think it's reflected by the focus areas and to tie it to a survey that we may not even know is reliable and can be so easily skewed by a group that has an axe to grind shouldn't be directing as to how we budget.
I guess, when I read that, the thing that I remember ever since 2006, people have said that the problem is taxes are too high. So tying funding to that from just a global perspective, that they want less taxes, that's the same number as opposed to make your, in your right-
Survey the devils, of course.
So does that, oh, yes. No, definitely not. Okay.
I think that's a good, that's a great-
It's informational.
Because a lot of them will put in one thing that's in there, says, you know, one extra question. Hey, do you like this?
Parking, things like that.
Okay, great. Any, anything else? Thank you so much for a very robust conversation on the operating budget development. If you can get your lunch, come back to your seat, and we'll do an overview of what's in the CIP submissions. Thank you. This is meant as a just broad overview.
Don't make it, don't make it too bad because we're eating.
It's what it is.
Yeah, again, these are submitted, okay? Submitted.
Well, we had a capital projects plan and a funding plan attached to that, and some of the, some of the projects were funded and some were not.
That's correct.
So, do we, do we start at that point maybe?
Well, some of, some of the projects, what I've done is I've gone back to our public works, parks and rep, schools, any things that got moved to deferred, they were given an opportunity to put it back. You know, what worked based on their priorities, based on what they saw is the needs, and that's how we got to submit it. So, so some of the projects that we didn't fund last year are back in there, just as submitted. Again, this has not been vetted, it's not been even really reviewed to any extent. So this really is-
It's only been typed on the spreadsheet.
It has, and that's the honest truth. Jared back here, he's a, he's my newer CIP accountant, and he has compiled this information for us. So he probably knows this more like the back of his hand than anybody else as far as that they're submitted. So we really have not talked about funding streams, any of that. You know, we're still looking and planning on doing the line of credit when we need to, because it's part of our long-term, on-time financing plan. So that, that's still the plan, is to utilize that line of credit when we need to establish it.
But last year, there was a certain, in the FY19 budget, there was a certain dollar amount in bottom that was part of the plan. And some, the vast majority of that was funded, and there's probably a couple, I don't know, piece that wasn't. So I'm kind of curious how, is this FY19 consistent with what was submitted, the dollar amounts was submitted last year?
It's close, but we did push some things out a year, so, you know, now you're going to see those projects. A lot of the school projects, the larger ones, got pushed a year or maybe two years. You're going to see, you know, it's now next year. So yes, that 2019 number is probably in the ballpark of what it was in the 18 through 22 CIP.
The other thing, so rather than doing this at the end based on our previous conversation, Sarah, can you scroll to the pay-as-you-go history? So what we have available for general fund pay-as-you-go projects, non-bond funded pay-as-you-go projects is $4 million. And that is from our leftover fund balance after we meet our fund balance target. Based on our financial policies.
It is better. It is better. And it, and I'm surprised it's this good. And I'm hoping once all the dust settles, that might even increase maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars. So again, this is very preliminary, just, you know, first blush. So, and then if you go to the page before, we can even start there, if you'll back up one, our page you go, you see the $4 million, here's what's been submitted for pay-as-you-go is $8 million. So we know we've got to seriously go through these before we even propose a budget to you. So, and that is come, we have not, like I said, I haven't even reviewed this extensively. So this is seriously, based on submissions, we know we're going to have to cut our pay-as-you-go about half. So now, if you'll go back where we're, so major building repairs, again, that's where we're getting a lot of that CIP request, the parking deck repairs and maintenance, those, these were in last year's submissions, and roof replacements. So that's $3.6 million for 19, 14.7 in our five-year plan. There's public safety complex, we appropriated $1.5 million for design in 18. We're showing another $1.5 million in 19. And then this would just be, what's in 2020 would just be the police department, and then possibly looking at doing the courts a little bit later. 7.9 for a total of 46.9 million in this five years. And you throw in the other 1.5 million, that gets us back to that 48, almost 49 million that was originally proposed. A new parking deck facility is in the out years, that was in the plan last year as well. The reserves that you're used to seeing, the city baseball stadium capital maintenance reserve that's in that franchise agreement is $100,000 a year. And as always, our snow street and bridge reserve. And hopefully, you know, we're just going to be done with snow, so. That global warming, right? Transportation projects, again, you've seen these through the years, downtown streetscape, 19 would be a build year. The even years are the design years, the odd years are the build years. So we're currently talking about in fiscal year 18, what we're designing to build in 19. The Link Road Bridge has been in there for several, several years, it's time to do the design. Route 501, 221, one-way pair, $22 million, the design would be in 19. College Lake Dam, we're still looking at what that funding looks like, what our requirements are going to be. So that's out there. The Capron Road, that one's been in there for a while, three and a half million dollars. Old Forest Road pedestrian improvements, Nationwide Drive, roundabout, Grays Mill Adaptive Signal System, and Kemper Street, the bike pedestrian improvement. So those are things that we have been talking about for a while, they're coming up in 2019.
This doesn't have a tone on it. The other one's different.
Well, we're getting there.
Can I, quick unrelated or quasi-related suggestion? Mike, can we look at it into changing the name of Nationwide Drive?
Oh.
Moving on what?
Change the name of Nationwide Drive.
It's Nationwide.
It's Nationwide.
Centra.
Something, yeah.
Because it doesn't go across the country?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
It only goes for like a couple blocks. Let's not change it until we get somebody else-
We will explore it.
Oh, Liberty Center, right?
Liberty, yeah, Liberty.
Liberty Center, but maybe they're just a better option.
How about nonprofit?
Tax exempt drive?
Yeah.
Okay, tax exempt drive. Sorry, strike that from the record. Okay. Some of our other projects that are in 2019 is the bridge maintenance. These are typically our maintenance programs that we do on an annual basement, basement, what, an annual basis.
I know, I'm tired. We've got the culvert program, general street improvements, and some of these will be part of that $8 million submissions for pay-as-you-go. These are transportation projects, this is our funding sources. So this bottom line would be pay-go and line of credit, bond use, that type of thing. So it is $82 million over, just for transportation over a five-year period. So it's 100, transportation's $147 million.
So what basement are we going?
I'm sorry, I'm tired. I haven't been standing in a long time. So public transit, don't bully me, Mary. It works, okay here. So the public transit projects, this would be GLTC. And what you're seeing is projected as the 10% local contribution to state and federal funding that we would do. But there's a nice little footnote down here that says state funding may be impacted beginning in 2019 due to an anticipated shortfall in funding if additional revenue sources are not identified.
That is that fiscal clerk information that I sent you earlier in the week?
Yeah.
Or capital transfer process.
So we're just not sure how, what that's going to look like yet.
Donna, when you had that first slide that said transportation was 1.5 million, was that GLTC?
No, GLTC is not in these numbers, it's that, this is GLTC.
Can you keep going back a little bit? I know I didn't-
I'm not sure what you were saying.
I got that tired. It was like, I guess it was like driver's or something, if they were trying, maybe.
Maybe, maybe that was great.
No, it was not. I asked, I turned to Trenae and I said, oh, is that transportation GLTC?
Yeah, and this is, this is your GLTC number.
It was general, I guess, factors that were driving some of the costs.
Oh, that was in the operating budget.
Operating?
So that's a while ago, yeah.
No!
Yeah, there is an operating piece to GLTC as well as a CIP.
It just had, it was in these slides.
Since we started this year.
Yes. And a transportation-
What kind of, what kind of sound were you, were you?
We didn't have too much hurry in it, go back a little bit.
Was it when we started first?
Yeah.
Go to the, go to the end slides.
Oh, oh, it might have been.
No, 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 in capital.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Better be a good question.
No, we might have been.
Oh, no, keep going, all the way to the very end.
That's capital.
There, no, up here, in pay-as-you-go, that probably said GLTC.
That was pay-as-you-go, there it is. Transportation 1.32, what is that?
That, that is not GLTC, that's a lot of our maintenance projects.
Oh, it is internal.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that, that does not include GLTC.
Go back?
Yes, to the transportation.
So, okay, I think you go one more.
Oh, that's the first one.
Okay, so these-
We did this.
We did this.
Next.
Next one.
Next.
There we go. Economic development, these are typically the projects that we are funding. The downtown development in 19 and 20, it's a half a million dollars because we still have a half a million dollars going to the Academy Theater. And we've increased it back up in 21 through 23. General development support and street utility extensions. And then the radio replacement, this is predominantly other departments, because we've really done most of public safety. There's a few still in there for public safety, but this would be community- But this would be community development. Public Works has radios. So this is really in addition to public safety. So and what they're trying to do is replace a few of those a year, or some of those a year. So this is predominantly not public safety. Parks and Recreation for two thousand nineteen, it's about two million dollars. And most of these are, they're funds that they do, like the athletic improvements. There is a gymnasium feasibility assessment that's new, that's in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Most of these are the, are the projects that you've been seeing year over year. And the Riverside Park, Park Overlook Stabilization, that's been out there for several years. And they requested to have that done in two thousand nineteen as a safety issue. So I don't think there's anything new there. I think the biggest one is the Miller.
Kind of a bigger question, so what's the?
Miller Park Pool Replacement.
So all of these, none of them have been kind of vetted or whatever? And it's, and it's, so what kind of feedback do you want from us?
This, I think.
Or you're saying that there's a lot of stuff for?
There's a lot of stuff, there needs funding.
Okay.
And we want you to be aware.
Money, okay.
Are these listed in terms of their priority?
No.
They're alphabetical by department, I think.
So this is schools, and again, you know, we've pushed these elementary school replacements out a number of years. The design for Sandusky Elementary School was, that was originally in eighteen. Might have been in seventeen, we've pushed it to nineteen. And then the three elementary school gym additions are in two thousand nineteen with the others in twenty twenty. And then the new transportation building is, is out to design in two thousand twenty-two. So but I think though, there's nothing new there. Their maintenance projects, you'll see that they're, they're not extensive in nineteen. The ones, the Lincoln Middle School Cooling Tower Replacement. And then they've got Darrington Elementary School Plumbing Project, Sandusky Middle School Track as maintenance, and Bass Elementary Gym Floor.
And some of these things can come from their, their fund balance? Or are not, are there excess money?
Well, they've requested that that entire amount, the four hundred and, I think it's sixty-four thousand dollars or in that ballpark, go to their health insurance reserve. And you will see that in there at your February thirteenth meeting.
So another option could be to pay for some of those things that are operational or not operational, but capital, that are maintenance.
Yep, you have that opportunity. Next slide. This is also maintenance for roof repairs in Darrington Elementary School A and C and EC Class High School Main Gym and Locker Room, that section of the schools. And so you'll see the totals there, fifty-two million over a five-year period, which is a big number. And then if you go to the next slide, what Ben has put together is, is if Lincoln Elementary School and Paul Monroe Elementary School are not renovated, then these are some things that would have to be taken care of. And then for Sandusky Middle School, if it's, the replacement doesn't happen, if they don't do a new building, then we're going to have to take care of some HVAC and plumbing.
Instead of a hundred million dollars in new schools to maintain.
This would at least extend the life of the schools for a while. So I appreciate Ben putting that together. Thought that was very awesome. So we move on. Okay, we're back to our pay-as-you-go. So that really is just, here's what we're looking at.
So that total is what, two hundred million now, roughly? We don't have a total, but just. Remember last time was like a hundred and eighty-seven million for. Anyway, you don't have.
I don't have a total on that. You don't have it in your head, Jerry, do you? You don't have a total in your head?
No.
So I'm sure it's big. It's a lot of news.
But if it's consistent with the needs that we anticipated, it shouldn't be that big of a deal.
I mean, I, I mean, there's not a lot of new up there. I mean, it's predominantly prioritizing year over year.
Because, because of that whole, I mean, we, we went through a complex, you have to budgeting episode. Where not only do we have to, we had to remember, we had to think about this in two different dimensions. Not only what we're going to do this year, but how that's going to affect out-years and how it's going to flow out-years. And it was a lot to get our head around. And I thought we got that pretty well locked in. I understand the priorities changed, but if, but if the dollars on the, you know, the total dollars from local funds, government, excuse me, from pay-as-you-go, from, from government obligation bond, geo bonds, or from state, if those stayed fairly consistent, then we're on plan.
Well, but I don't think the plan was fully funded in two thousand eighteen for the five years. So I mean, I think that's kind of back where we are is, you know, what's the funding of these really look like?
But, but we only pulled out a couple of those items.
I think we, we pushed out quite a bit. A lot of projects in the CIP, but not funded. We didn't have a funding strategy.
Okay. Because it was basically. Let's take a look at those projects that we didn't have a funding strategy on.
Well, and they, a lot of those have been incorporated back in here as, you know, because we asked departments, look at what you've submitted, make sure you're throwing in your prioritization. So a lot of those that were not funded and pushed out got put back in.
And some of them probably got pushed out because they weren't like a, like the, maybe the Park and Rec Complex or whatever that was, or that was a new number that came in.
Yeah, and that's taken that completely off.
Yeah, exactly, which is good. The schools, it looked like, it looked like instead of, you know, bulldozing and build new, there's some good options to rehab. So I'm hopeful, but most of that, I think, wasn't, wasn't funded because we had such little margin as far as the, to deal with, not just the pay-as-you-go, but regarding what we could fund, the operational, the annual.
Well, I saw John Capron Drive there, which wasn't funded previously. That's a project I like. So I'm making the assumption that there's been some, maybe some outside funding that's associated.
Well, we don't know what's going to happen yet.
Yeah, okay.
But there's hope.
Like, for example, the two twenty-one, five oh one. Twenty-two million?
Yes.
Two million-ish. And most of that-ish, that's my question. Most of it's local, how much?
Most of it's not local.
Well.
On that one.
Most of it is not local, that's correct.
So it's not local, okay.
So we're hoping if we pay for the design, that possibly we could get funding to do the project.
And that's what I was, how much have we, we've applied for that through the SMART scale?
So we applied last year and we're not funded. We are gearing up to apply again. Council did approve funding last year for the environmental assessment, which is very expensive and can take up to eighteen months.
Okay.
And I believe also funded design. So the good news going into the SMART scale application process and scoring process is that the city owns most of the right-of-way for that. So that's, you know, our contribution. We are in the process of funding the environmental assessment and maybe starting design. So that will help us in terms of scoring.
The two-way pairs, is that?
That is the one-way pair project, yes.
Yeah, the two-way. Well, it's one-way. It's one-way, two-way, yeah.
It's a six, it's a half of the twelve route, right?
It's a two-half dozens.
So we reapply this, uh, twenty nineteen?
We reapply later this year.
Oh, so it is in twenty fifteen?
Yes, but scoring and vetting is not until, I believe, early nineteen.
The problem with that is that according to VDOT, our denominator was too high. Meaning the, the project was so large, once you divided it by the value, that the return on the investment from a state perspective was lower than the return on investment of other projects. And so the big argument from VDOT is that we had to get our denominator, the cost of the project down, which again helped it rise in the priority list. So how do you phase it? I don't know if you, because I, I, it's my frustration with the SMART scale. It means you're not going to get more budget funded. In my case.
That is a huge economic.
It has the potential.
Potential in our community. It's a great crossroads between our counties and our, our city. And talk about some shopping, you might get some there. So it's just, I don't know, I think it's a very important piece that's missing.
So what if you consider a city like Lynchburg is the project that we would fund using our own dollars traditionally? So there's an off-ramp, I'm going to express the way it costs maybe one more five to eight. If we fund it ourselves, ourselves using local dollars and something else, those magnitudes of projects are being submitted at stake. And the cost benefit is such that they get funded and then they eat up the available funding as you go down the list, because it's a priority list, one through twenty, which ranked by, I guess, value for the dollar spent. And because our, because our dollar spend's so high, it draws that value down. They fund the top, I think they funded the top seven on the list of twenty-something, we were like, no, we're eleven. That's the funding that you made it to.
And so maybe that was, if, if that's the case, and we need to kind of revamp our strategy and maybe put that rascal on the back burner, or figure out a way that we can get money from some other project to what's up. Because if we're, you know, the only negative of that having a really good interchange there is allowing people to get out of Lynchburg a lot quicker, as well as a negative. I mean, if people can get out of Lynchburg quicker, there's less incentive to stay in Lynchburg. You know, obviously, we were hoping that they can get into Lynchburg quicker as well, and shop and whatnot. But if they can get out of Lynchburg quicker, that's, we don't want that either. So I mean, that's, roads go two ways. So roads help to move people in the city quicker, but they also help to move people out of the city quicker. So the more that we can have the business stay there and be in, in there. I know that interchange would be great to have, but if we're not going to get any of the money for it on the SMART scale, maybe it's time to look at ones that we can get the money for.
So we get money from the smaller projects if we can, and use the money that we set aside in smaller projects for bigger projects.
And that would be the only case, maybe that I would even think about that. So we're thinking, it would be a trade-off because I think that is a.
Because if we're not going to get any, I'm just saying if we're not going to get any.
Oh, yeah, I'm not pushing.
And we couldn't get the elsewhere. I don't know how it works, but that's what it sounded like I'm hearing you say. I don't know anything about it.
Just, oh, there's a kind of money allocated and authority expressed.
And we designed it a bunch of times, so we liked that design, I think.
No, we found real, I mean.
Not designed it, but we had the concept. So we didn't spend money on it.
Every time we spend money on something like that, it lowers our overall cost. Now, granted, every year it goes up, it's more than just a bill. So I don't know if we're going to make money from it. I don't even want to talk about it.
Yeah, they don't allow people to get out of the city quickly, see, that's my point. They don't let anybody out of that city. They know, don't leave, stay here and shop.
My, my thought of that is not so much that residents going in and out of commerce. The ability, commerce. Move, move, move freight, move in. I guess is where we're more of a service.
And that odd, the, the odd fellow's road is going to change, that's.
Well, that's because it's built, that's funny if I beat up, that's deliberate, right? That's, although the dogs are going to be connected once you get a building.
Re-drive interchange was great. A lot of years late in coming, but that was fabulous, it drove up the other day, fabulous.
So hold that thought, John, which is important, because.
John Tedcath, maybe just. We're now on the right side. I guess one of my frustrations from last year is that we were all coached to focus on one, one project. And we did and we didn't get it. So maybe we need to focus on several projects.
We will be.
Yeah, based on how the formulas work, because obviously, I mean, you know, we.
Got to aim them.
Yeah, exactly. So if we can get off the road.
All right, what's next?
What's the status of development around that, around two twenty-one and the interchange right there? Properties on, yeah, the properties on the side. It's all holding, holding pattern, but it's nothing on the table right now?
Okay.
And I think the thing is that if maybe this road had happened, there's some glimmer of light there that maybe we have to give it back on some of those burdens.
Depends on the developer.
Yeah, really, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You mentioned that there were items that were, we took off of the capital list and they were added back on. I know we can go back and look at last year's budget, but could you highlight that so on March, when we see this, we know which ones were added, added back?
Yes.
Over the.
Of course we have.
And some of those we may have moved just a year because of the easy. We really could have moved them completely, or we reluctantly moved them a year. So I mean, that's.
We have a very colorful way of showing, showing that. Winding down, being respectful, we retarded it for one thirty.
So one, one last quick question on the, before leaving the CIP. What did we have? We had the four million for the, the pay-as-you-go, but what did we have from the debt financing? You know, what's freed up in the debt service?
We haven't.
Is there anything?
What do you mean what's freed up?
Did they free up? So we got all these requests, we'll say two hundred million. Do we have ten million in available debt service, geo bond service, or two million?
I have a meeting later on in February with Davenport to talk about debt capacity and how, how the best use of our line of credit is.
So is, oh, that's right.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't want to go borrow a set amount of money. We want to be able to do this ongoing.
On time.
One, on-time financing for line of credit.
So with that, you had budgeted or placeholder some amount of debt service, new debt service, I imagine, in this upcoming budget?
In nineteen, I have, oh, I hate this word now, I have a placeholder of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of interest that we would have to pay because it would be interest-only. We, we currently have some bonds left from our two thousand sixteen borrowing that have not spent as quickly as what we thought. So we continue to reprioritize those bond fundings. Some projects came in lower, so we had some savings. So we're meeting and looking at those regularly to understand how we're utilizing those first. So I, I'm not sure when the city capital fund will need that line of credit funding. So it just depends on how quickly some of these projects move forward. So water and, water resources, they probably will need to utilize the line of credit before the city capital.
Do a meeting on May first?
It's election day?
Is it?
No, it's got to be the second.
May first is election day.
Is it May, is usually the first Tuesday, Monday, and the first Tuesday followed by a Monday?
Yeah, we've always had.
May first could be.
May first is election day, I checked with the registrar.
So it usually has to be like May eighth then?
I think it's the first Tuesday.
Those are first, normally the rules were first Tuesday following Monday. And so there's not a Monday in May because of May first.
Well, that marks people in the race. When is the election?
I understand it's May first.
It's May first.
Yeah, but, but.
May one, that's Tuesday.
Normally it could.
It's May first.
State rules.
Four years ago, it was May sixth.
Has to be, it can't be November, it couldn't be November first, it has to be November eighth.
It's not.
But one day, two, or second.
I think for a local election.
Registrar states. Registrar states.
So local.
Yeah, you don't have that rule.
Fair enough. So no work session.
So right now, we don't have something scheduled for May first. We are noting that the the public hearing is during school's spring break week. We've gotten some feedback on that before. We we could flip that to the tenth.
We should.
Do you wanna, the pub, the public hearing, we usually have it the first Tuesday of April, but that conflicts with Lynchburg City Schools' spring break week. And we've gotten some negative feedback in the past about that.
Well, they, I mean, if we normally do that, they change their spring break, that's not our fault. I mean, isn't it? That's what we're doing. I'm not trying to be contentious.
Council gets to decide.
Yeah, their spring break is typically following Easter, so.
So somebody moved Easter this year or something like.
Yeah. I don't think we should have the public hearing.
So.
Spring break week.
We'll be doing college tour.
Families will be gone. Grandmas will be gone.
We're doing college tours.
Yeah.
So we'll be moving back. So what I would suggest this, Ben, that we take a break on April third. And on April tenth, if we need to, we have our regular work session at four and the public hearing at seven.
Those public hearings normally, they've been, they've been long.
We had like forty people last year. What are you talking about?
It was long. It was a huge one.
And and if we cut the things that have been, wait a minute, what's the word?
Placehold.
Placehold.
Placeholders.
Submitted. There may be a single contingency of people who wanna know if we're not gonna pick up their trash or do a break with littering or.
We're gonna raise their taxes.
Yeah, raise taxes. I think our public needs to know that we respect what we want them to come out in.
Can we do it for twenty-seven?
To make more sense to back it up, to give ourselves more Tuesday.
What's wrong with the tenth?
Well, the tenth, other than that, we have another meeting, if we don't have to have a meeting.
Oh, you know what, the tenth probably, the tenth is a regular council meeting.
Oh, you're.
You can't do it. You can't do it on that day.
As is the twenty-seventh.
Right.
Oh, yeah. We'll get back to you.
Have to be a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Why can't you, I mean, if anything else that's on the tenth, can't you move that stuff on a regular? We have public hearings.
It depends on if there's any community development, public hearings.
You'll stand alone.
Tell you what, why don't we do the budget public hearing in Aruba on the third? In commemoration of spring break.
I bet Merle, it's cheaper.
Merle'd be good.
We could keep it Virginia.
We could do it as early as March twentieth. That is not a council, a regular council meeting day. We still have budget work session at four. We have time to, we'll have time to advertise it. I mean, you're really just receiving feedback from citizens and listening during that session.
And that's feedback based on the manager's submitted budget.
Right, which is what it always is.
Right. And so if the budget is, and normally isn't, oh, maybe you presented four or five.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't have the public hearing now. And that's a regular meeting day. So what do you think of having the public hearing on the twentieth?
I think that's good.
Sounds good.
Twentieth of March?
Are you all gonna be here?
I mean, nobody will have a chance to read it, so I think that's enough.
We we are gonna do something different this year than we did last year. When I presented my budget to you last year, that's all that occurred that day. We are gonna start the walkthrough on the thirteenth at that work session. So I will present it to the public and then we will start the departmental.
Can we not do that? Because it's nice to kind of get it, read it, and kind of sit back and digest a little bit. I like that digesting ability rather than, you know, it's like a lot of.
A little bit of.
It's like a lot of times we get, like, when we get stuff ahead of time, but it's a few days ahead of time, or at least kind of look at it and digest and kind of get to look at it, let it grow to tape a little bit and figure out what it is, rather than, you know, presenting and then. Because we need to have the form of questions to ask. And if we just got it an hour before, it's.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, because we get, we we're briefed by the manager individually. And but we don't know what the final numbers are or what the final results and budget's gonna be.
And importantly, the public does it, and a lot of times they look at it and they say, hey, this is a bad thing, and they lobby us and they call and they, why this is good, why it's bad, or whatever.
Can can we get it at least, you know, before, I mean, at least, is it done before, credited before the thirteenth?
Oh, yeah, you can usually, we usually get it in part.
Just get, we get it. But it's not public until right then.
We get it there, yes.
Right, you have to embargo it.
I've had it in part. At least three or four days.
All I'm saying is have a little more time in between when a public presentation is. Just because we have it, it needs to be, my point is that it's a public document, it's not public even if we get it a month before.
Sure.
You know, once it's public at four o'clock on Monday, March thirteenth, there should be a little time to, you know, let things percolate.
Well, are you, are you willing to have a public hearing on a night that's not a Tuesday?
Sure.
I mean. Ever on April second, then?
April first is better. Sorry, I'm scaling my energy.
Good, that's good. See, that makes it more fun.
All right, we'll look at, we'll look at some potential dates and get back to you on a public, proposed public hearing date. Is that all right? But meanwhile, reserve all the dates on this calendar except for April third, when we'll take a break.
But you had that on there as a, as a calendar. So now you're, you have it listed as a calendar with a little asterisk that says, hey, by the way, it may be spring break. But that was listed on there, so is that not?
Right, what I heard from consensus, maybe, was to not have the, a meeting on April third, because people are gonna be out of town and our citizens are gonna be out of town.
Correct?
Is that?
Correct, Everett? Oh, I don't even need to. Five of me. Okay, so I think, I'm gonna just do a little quick thing. Sterling, April third, what are your thoughts that maybe we need to not have that on the third?
I think we need to move, because you, I was true that because of, so you're wrong.
I'm getting college tours.
Okay.
I'm available on May third.
I agree with moving it.
Sorry, good. I don't know if I, it's whatever law I'm gonna do, I don't know.
I'll be here, but I think generally a good portion of our population would not be able to be here.
And I'm concerned about that as well, so I think we need to seek another date.
But I was giving to Jeff that the twentieth is too soon.
I think that's a little soon as well.
The public needs to digest it and maybe even hear our comments on some things.
And if there's not a lot of stuff on April tenth, you know, have it then at the night meeting. If it is a lot of stuff that you know that's coming because of planning commission or finance or whatever, then have that on April ninth, have a separate meeting Monday night. We did a separate budget presentation on a Monday usually, right? Or no, we do the state of the city on Monday. So a public hearing on Monday before or the, on the ninth, have a separate meeting.
So potentially, public hearing on April ninth.
Yeah. As opposed to moving it up, given, you know, it'd be, it'd be seven days later or six days later.
But he did say if we have a full agenda for the seventh.
But if we could.
Seven thirty.
If you guys could tentatively mark out, I'm not gonna use that other word, the fourth ninth on your calendar, please do that for the budget public hearing. Mayor, Council, that's all staff has. This has been incredibly and amazingly informing for staff as we put together the proposed budget. Thank you for your candor and and conversation. This is really what I want for sessions to be. So thank you for your engagement. Thank you to staff, Donna, Starlit, LTV, Charles, John, Valerie, Kena, June.
Very last call, you missed it.
These dudes.
And I wanna thank the food, and I wanna thank Mayor James for being so nice sitting next to me.
Okay. Any other comments from council members before we?
I'll, I'll just say that this was a fabulous thing. Last time, I think it was terrible. I think we learned and it was great. This was fabulous. Everybody got interacted. Presentations were good, gave us a nice thing, a good discussion about ideas. I think it was great. Food was good, too.
I thought it was a great exchange, that having listened to Jeff all the time.
Any knowledge?
So thanks, Stan, for your hard work. I know it's a little challenging doing a budget, so thank you, all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Despite the placeholder.
It won't happen again. Got it.
And it's a mission.
Randy, any? I think so. I think as we head into the budget session, it does get a little laborious, a little tiring. But remember the state, we did have a good day. We had great discussions. And I think we're all going away pretty happy today, so thank you so much and thank, thank you, goes out to staff. Thank you. Making, making a great day. So thank you, thank you, Margaret, for being here and sitting through all of this with us.
She has lots to write about.
Yes.